Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, June 21st. This is our regular meeting. We have been in session for a special meeting for the interviews of applications for our Yountville Arts Commission, and that action will be presented by our clerk later in staff informational reports. So with that, I'll ask for a roll call, please, for our regular meeting.
Councilmember Mueller?
Here.
Councilmember Durham?
Here.
Councilmember Doran Becker?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hall?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. Vice Mayor, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next up is adoption of tonight's agenda, and I know we do have one correction that, Julie, you're going to clarify?
Yes, on item 8A, approval to request the July 19th meeting should be July 5th meeting.
Nice try. Okay, so with that, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll move to adopt the agenda.
As corrected.
As corrected.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving right ahead. Public comment. Now would be the time for anyone that would like to speak on an item that's not being discussed tonight. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Dunbar, members of the council. My name is Leanne Link, and I'm from the county of Napa. I was recently appointed by the Board of Supervisors as the County Executive Officer, effective August 27th, replacing Nancy Watt, who's been our wonderful executive officer for many years. I just came tonight as part of a plan that I have to go and routinely visit the town council and the city councils within the county so that I stay in good touch and really learn about what's going on outside of the county. So I'm here tonight just to observe, and I thank you for having me, and be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you for being here. We appreciate that very much, and congratulations on your new position. Were there any specific questions? I don't think, I mean, it's public comment, so we can't really get into a dialogue, but welcome, and we look forward to working well with you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public on an item not on the agenda tonight? And can you point, yeah, you're going to point that a little bit more? There we go. Thank you. Guaranteed to have the next speaker be a really tall speaker, though, I'm sure. Seeing no other public comment, we'll move ahead to the consent calendar. We've already addressed the one correction on item 8A, which is approval to cancel the July 5th meeting. I am going to pull items C and E for comment. So that leaves corrected A, B, D, and F for consideration of a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve the items on the consent calendar, A, B, D, and F.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. I pulled item C and item E. Item C, I asked to be pulled because I want to discuss with our Public Works Director my concern that I expressed during our budget conversations and our capital improvement conversations about the timing of the reconstruction and water replacement on Yountville Crossroad. I didn't see, in reading the item, that we have a specific timeline or dates certain listed in the bid. Is that something that gets negotiated after the bid, or did I just not see that in the bid?
You're correct, Mayor. That's still, these plans and specs are at 90%, and as we get them closer to the final product, we will have a more firm date. And honestly, even once we award, it takes a little bit of time to negotiate the contracts, and that is kind of a moving target. Right now, if I was guessing, I would say it's closer to the end of October, the timeline. And just so all the council knows, I know there was quite a few questions about traffic control and what our plans were for traffic control, and we've had quite a few discussions, both internal and with our consultants, and we've come to the conclusion, and the county, that the county's amenable to us having some message boards out on Silverado Trail and Highway 29, but we are going to leave Yountville Crossroads open at least one lane the entire time, so we won't have a closure. We will have some delay, up to 15 or 20 minutes at times, but at least one lane will be open for the entirety of the project, and that's how we're going to manage traffic control. We are going to encourage people through the use of message boards out on Silverado Trail and Highway 29 to use alternative routes due to the delays that could be included in our project. But basically, we're going to keep it open and allow traffic to kind of go through with some radio, flagman and radio combination. So we think it's a good plan. It doesn't, it didn't add additional costs to the project, and based on the fact that we are going to be trying to do this as weather permits, we needed to try to get this done in October-ish, and we think this is a good plan to be able to accomplish both. The need to get the project done before the rain comes in, and also manage the harvest traffic and the tourism that comes along with the harvest. So we think it's a workable solution for us, and we're going to keep working on it to make sure that we drill down and get all those fine details included in the final plan.
I appreciate it. That's basically the answer I was hoping to hear. My concern is really how we're going to be impacting during harvest, but also the correlation of the timing with the renovation of Veterans Memorial Park. So we can worry about the exact dates in the future. You've addressed that the bids aren't being impacted by that, and I'm satisfied.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Happy to answer the question.
If there's no other discussion or concern about that, I'll entertain a motion to accept item 8C.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. I pulled 8E, Town Manager. I wanted to make sure that the record was clear that by accepting Argonaut Construction, it does not remove the concern we have about the delays that were caused related to PG&E's behavior.
In a word, yes. We are protecting, we have an obligation to make good on our contract with Argonaut. The PG&E claims will be filed separately. Staff is working on that, and we're in the neighborhood of about 250,000.
Two fifty-two.
Two fifty-two that we will be letting PG&E know that we would like them to pay us back.
And I just wanted to make sure that was clear, because I saw that we had a change order list in this approval, and none of those items were related to the PG&E delays, what we consider PG&E delays.
Those items could be related to PG&E delays, but we would still, that's outside of what Argonaut and the project required for completion, so it doesn't negate our ability to recover or file the claim for our PG&E delays. And honestly, Mayor and council, the claim, the numbers we're coming up with are hard costs, so it's not any gray numbers. It's the construction management costs that were extended, fence rentals, delays for weather that included dumping and tipping fees, I mean, all stuff that are legitimate costs, and we hope that PG&E will see that we're trying to be honest brokers in this deal and accept that process for what it is. So they're aware that there's a claim pending, and we're just trying to assemble the numbers and the data so that we can give them an accurate accounting of what we think the claim is.
I appreciate that, and you're two for two. I'm satisfied with that answer as well.
Thank you very much.
Comment, Vice Mayor?
I would just like to comment on this particular item. In talking with the Town Manager, he reminded me that, you know, we've made these significant investments in the town's infrastructure, and this project in particular, the Hopper Creek Project in its entirety, is actually the third-largest project in public works in the town's history, the first being Town Community Center, and the third then, or the second being the Town Hall and the renovations here. This project, at just under $3 million, is the third-largest public works project in the town's history. So kudos to the town for being able to accomplish that on time, as on time as we could be with some of the delays, but on budget and plan, and hopefully we'll get some recovery from PG&E, but thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no additional comments, is there a motion to accept this item?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you for those explanations. I appreciate it. Now we are going to hear a sheriff's update. I think the sheriff has some updating. Welcome.
Mayor Dunbar, councilmembers.
Can you raise that up a little bit so the world can hear? Thank you.
This is the first time anybody's ever said that.
It's not on. Don't worry about it.
I just want to brief you on some changes that we have coming for Yountville. We apologize that we have to do some staffing changes, but as you know, Yountville has been great for our department, both past and present. People have taken advantage of the pathway on up through promotions and through administration, myself included. But I want to thank you for taking the time to guide our staff so that they have the ability to move up in our department, and we really appreciate it. We like our relationship. We like the contract, but it does give us the experience. We had a lieutenant retire a little before we thought he was going to, and we've offered, Sergeant John Crawford is your current sergeant in town, the position of lieutenant starting July 2nd. But the good news, I know that may be bad news for you, it's good news for John, but the good news is that we found a great replacement in Sergeant John Hallman. So I think that the city manager has, Town Manager, has vetted them both and feels that they're both capable of doing the job, and John is going to be a wonderful addition to Yountville. I can't guarantee that we're going to leave John here for the rest of his career, but, you know, we'll try our best.
As long as they all have the first name of John will be fine. Or Sergeant works, that's really the first name, right?
Sergeant does work, but thank you very much. I don't know if they want to say anything if you've met John before, but like.
Yes, please, if we could have our new Sergeant John come forward.
Hello, councilmembers? Everyone else in the room? I'm John Hallman. I'm native to Napa Valley my whole life. My wife and two children live with me just north of Napa, just south of here, and pretty familiar with Yountville. I've been with the department about 19 years and with the county about 21 years. So I'm really looking forward to getting to know you guys and serve you.
Great. Thank you, and welcome to Yountville.
Thank you.
Make sure that you review Lieutenant John Crawford's previous presentations. He did a very good job.
All right.
Very good.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Sergeant Crawford, behalf of the entire council and I'm sure the Yountville community, thank you for your service to us these past few months, and we look forward to continuing to work with you as you start to dress like these two fine gentlemen over here in the corner. We'll still recognize you, I think. You'll probably look a lot thinner without that vest on, you know, and.
It's all vest, too, by the way.
Yeah.
Much thinner, a lot. You know, this has been a great opportunity for me, and I've really enjoyed it, and I really enjoyed meeting all of you and working with every one of the staff here. You know, I've spoken with Captain Bellmer before about, you know, one of the things that's actually changed for me personally is I'm confusing a lot of people like Safeway in different places, because I walk around and I smile and wave, and they don't have any idea who I am, but I'm so used to it from driving around town and waving and smiling at people that it confuses people everywhere else, but honestly, this has been, I've really enjoyed it, so I thank you all for the experience, and I'm sure we'll see each other around.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And I want to echo, oh, yeah. I want to echo what Councilmember Durham was referencing in bringing some new look at the data and giving a bit of a backstory to what's happening and trends and things like that. That's something that we have kind of a new benchmark, I think, to look forward to in a very positive way, so we appreciate you bringing that knowledge. You've also been helpful in some of the specific issues we've been addressing this year, like the new medical marijuana act and how we might be moving forward with that. So thank you very much, and we look forward, yeah, the noise ordinance. Thank you again, and we look forward to having Sergeant Hallman take over and keep the baton moving forward.
He will. He'll do well.
You don't have to wave.
I will. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Lieutenant. So they're not letting you go yet, huh?
Well, I'm here.
There you go. Okay, we're going to move on to our next presentation, Geospatial Information Systems, also easier to say GIS, presentation, and our Myville app rollout.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Members of the council, very excited tonight to finally have a product rollout. Some of you have been testing this for us for some time now, but tonight, we are officially rolling this out to the public, and we're very excited that the residents here in town and some visitors will be able to use this app on a regular basis. So what you're seeing here are the two versions of what you will go to your App Store to download. So on the left-hand side is the.
Yeah, the screen's there.
On the left-hand side is the Apple version. On the right-hand side is the Droid version. So if you go to the App Store, in particular for the Apple App Store, there are two Myville listings. Our listing is not the game, just so you know.
I tried that one, too.
Yeah, I was going to caution people on that one, but, so if you download it, then you will get a variety of applications that are included in a package, and we're going to run a small video that we created that actually won some international awards at the ICMA conference for a public application. So we're very excited about being able to show this in public for the first time, and we hope you are able to view this and enjoy the video.
Maybe.
Well, so while that's loading, a quick question, and this will guarantee that it starts running. Do we need to re-download the app if we had the previous app?
Yeah, I would say that if you've had the app for some time, then you should delete that app and then reload it, because we have been.
The Myville app is a new program developed through a partnership with the town of Yountville, California, and the city of Rancho Cucamonga, California. This new app allows residents and visitors of Yountville to access information in new ways not previously available. When the app opens, the user is shown the news tool. This screen provides the user with all of the latest Yountville news stories. On the events tab, users can see upcoming happenings in the town, such as movies in the park or other community events. On the meetings tab, users can select an upcoming meeting of the Yountville Town Council or zoning and design review board, and even add the meeting to their calendar. At the bottom of the screen is a menu displaying the other tools within the app. The report tool allows residents and visitors to report issues in town, such as graffiti, illegal dumping, nuisances, or trip hazards. Reminders are put into place that if the user is experiencing or witnessing an emergency, they should dial 911. When the tool launches, the user selects the type of report they wish to file. Then they may add their name, phone, email, and a description of what they see. Users can snap photos of the issues and send them directly to town staff. The photo is tagged with GIS data, so town staff can easily find the location of the issue, even if the description is incomplete. This new resource gives Yountville residents more power than ever before to work with town staff in keeping this community beautiful. The next tool is the property info tool. Here, the user can enter in any address to get information about a property, such as the assessment number, acreage, when the street is swept, when the trash is picked up, or the zoning. The maps tool contains various maps for residents and visitors to enjoy. Users can choose from the ever-growing list of available maps to help them discover new things about Yountville. One of these maps is the bicycle access map. This map shows the Class 1, Class 2, and Class 3 bike routes in town. The sidewalk and pedestrian path map shows the user the existing sidewalk and trail system in town. The last tool in the app is the info tool. On this menu, a user can pull up important lists, such as the business list. Here, a complete list of restaurants, hotels, or other businesses is available. The user can have the whole town in the palm of their hands as they view a map of all the businesses, and even launch the business's website straight from the app. This is especially helpful when deciding on one of Yountville's great restaurants and perusing menus. Users will also be able to use the app as they walk the town, utilizing the public art walk tour to guide their journey. By having this tool up as they venture throughout the town, users will be able to locate the different art pieces on display throughout Yountville. Another tool available for those walking the town is the historic tour. Yountville has a rich and fascinating history, and now users can use this app to guide them as they explore the town. A list of all the town parks is also available, in case you wanted to take that lunch to go. This app is still in development, but we are constantly adding more maps and enhanced features that will make the user experience that much better. Myville will not just provide the public with a tool to improve the community, but also a tool to become more involved and informed of the countless opportunities around
So as the video was illustrating, we are constantly trying to improve and include other items and structures and infrastructure around town, so with input from residents and visitors alike, we will be able to keep on kind of improving our Myville app. I would, I will say that we've had a very long and prosperous relationship with Rancho Cucamonga, who helped us build this app. They have an amazing staff that continues to help us get much better content on here and improve some of the, some of the features. Just this afternoon, our engineering aide, Jacob Solis, and our public, our Parks and Recs Director, Samantha Holland, updated the art walk. So we have some new art that's being added in the next couple of weeks, and so that art is now available for viewing and will be included on the app as of today. So we did, we also had some questions over the past couple of council meetings about sweeping schedules and those kinds of public services that are included for the residents who live here in town, and we have an app that you can punch in your address, and it will tell you the public utilities that you're served by, give you a link to those utilities, the phone numbers, will tell you when their sweeping schedule is. So, and there's a couple of different places where residents can find that kind of information, so we're trying to be a bit more proactive in some of what we're giving access to and helping people find, and we definitely want to try to include more and more material. So to the extent that we can get people to solicit feedback to us, we would be happy to include that kind of information and data. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Did our management analyst, Mr. Steele, receive an award for his voiceover?
I think that's why we won the award. We've actually, and I know Councilmember Doran Becker is particularly excited anytime we do this, we've included, we've applied for a Helen Putnam Award for this product as well, so we tried last year for a different project. We unfortunately were recognized but didn't win. We hope that this one might be one that might put us in the win column, so we're continuing to try to get this out there and let people know what's possible with the GIS program. People think it's just for maps, but as you can see, it provides so much more content and ability to kind of see what's going on in your town.
Right. Any other questions from council?
Well done. I'm excited.
Yeah, yeah, it's great.
Really glad to finally see it launched. So is this on all platforms?
It is. Yes, it is. It's on, you can go to your Apple App Store, for those of you with Apple products, iOS, and for those of you with non-Apple products, you go to the Droid Store and download in the Droid Store. So please go, download it. If you have any questions or comments, please call us, and we'll be happy to walk you through it or help you find something that may not be on the map.
Very good. Thanks very much.
Yep.
Okay, we're going to move right ahead to our first public hearing for this evening, Use Permit Amendment for Maison Riz to Convert ABC License from Type 2 to Type 42. We'll start with the staff report, please.
Good evening.
Oh, I'm sorry, hold on a sec. Vice Mayor?
I'm wondering if I need to make a disclosure here, and I think I will. So this may be my last chance to do it, so I'm going to go ahead and do that. In the past, having consulted with our town attorney and being advised that while discussion on wine tasting room regulations within the town of Yountville will have no direct impact upon the operations of my employer, Cliff Lady Vineyards, to the extent that there may be indirect impacts upon my employer, these economic impacts are not significant enough under the regulations of the Fair Political Practices Commission to result in my disqualification. At this time, I will elect to participate, but I am required to disclose that I'm an employee of Cliff Lady Vineyards, serving as its Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you. I almost forgot about your disclaimer.
I almost forgot that I had it, too.
Oh, he'll tell you.
Sandra.
Good evening. Tonight you have before you a Use Permit Amendment for Maison Riz, and Maison Riz is currently conditioned as a wine tasting room with retail sales of art and home furnishings. The use permit allows serviced wine tastings, both indoors and out, but quantities are limited to wine tasting-sized portions, and that's a two ounces max, which means that neither glasses nor bottles of wine may be consumed on-site. Food preparation is permitted in the on-site kitchen, but food is only permitted for special events and not as part of the daily wine tasting. Special events are permitted annually with a limited number of major and minor special events, and commercial transactions are limited outdoors. And the purpose of these conditions is to limit the consumption of wine so that the business does not operate as a bar, and to limit the preparation and consumption of food so that it doesn't operate as a restaurant. And the other conditions are really to mitigate impacts of the use on the adjoining residential properties. So in 2015 restoration hardware purchased Maison Riz, and the application before you tonight is to recognize the change in ownership, to address a condition of approval that references Blackford Vineyards as the host of the tasting room and to eliminate that reference, and then to convert the ABC license to a Type 42. Maison Riz operates under a wine grower's license, which is an O2, and this is a proposal to convert it to a 42, which is a bar or lounge license. And so I'd like to just start by describing how those permits are different. The O2 is a wine grower license that authorizes the sale of wine for consumption on-site. Minors are permitted, and while ABC does allow consumption of wine by the glass or bottle with a wine tasting room license, the town further restricts the license under its land use authority and the use permit process, and wine tasting rooms in town are limited to a two-ounce portion size. A Type 42 is commonly referred to as a bar tavern, and so it's where you can order glasses of wine or beer, and minors are not allowed to enter because it's a bar or tavern. And the way we have analyzed this is in terms of the change in use on the Maison Riz property, and the applicant indicates that other than the change in ABC type, the business will operate exactly as permitted and under the conditions of approval for Maison Riz. And we believe that we can address this change in license type in that manner and condition it to operate exactly the same and to limit the portion size. And so we are presenting a resolution to you in that, with that in mind. I do want to mention that this is Phase 1 for the Maison Riz property as it relates to the overall campus with RH next door, but the applicant does intend to come forward at some time in the future with other changes to their approved permits for both properties, and that would be before you at a publicly noticed hearing, and we're not aware fully of all those changes yet, so that's not really up for discussion tonight, it's just the ABC license type. In anticipation that the Phase 2 does not proceed or it doesn't proceed timely, we are recommending conditions of approval that address Maison Riz impacts that exist at this point in time, and that is with regards to Burgundy Commons and the noise issues that the residents have, so we're proposing to replace the residential-style wood fence with an eight-foot-tall CMU fence, which is a standard application where residential properties abet commercial properties. And we are also recommending that a condition of approval apply that the applicant participate in the town's employee parking management program that has the elements of registration of the vehicles, the issuance of parking stickers, the designation of an on-site parking zone in the parking lot, and then approved off-site parking area. So with these conditions in place, we are recommending approval, and I can answer any questions if you have them.
Just to clarify the last couple of points you made, even though we're only addressing Maison Riz specifically in the request for the license change, that still is triggering the potential of the eight-foot CMU wall and the parking management plan, and that has nothing to do with the anticipated but as-yet-unfiled RH?
Correct. That's related to the amendment of. That's related to the amendment of their permit to change the use and staff's attempt to address existing impacts.
Okay, but I'm just trying to make sure that it's clear to everyone that it's Maison Riz specific.
Specific, yes.
Yeah, okay. Other questions? Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes, please. I noticed in the, in the report for us that it talked about how a type 2 wine tasting licenses, because that was a vineyard owner and that was it, but type 42 allows a, a wine bar. Are they anticipating this becoming a wine bar?
I'm not sure the request we will see in the future. An ABC license opens up that opportunity, but we have authority under land use law to restrict the use if needed.
I see.
And just to clarify, I believe the conditions as proposed would not allow for a wine bar.
I'm not sure, are you on? Is your mic on? I'm not sure if it's...
Hit your green button.
There we go.
For the benefit of those at home, the, the conditions, I think, as proposed, would not allow for a wine bar. They limit pours to two ounces and specifically say it shall not operate as a bar. So although the ABC license might allow it, we wouldn't.
I see. Okay, can I just clarify?
Other questions at the staff report? Councilmember Durham?
Yeah, one quick question. I'm sorry, the type 85 license doesn't...
Your microphone, please.
Sorry. The type 85 license doesn't play into any of this consideration?
We don't, since that will be, we don't believe so, since it will be operated from an offsite location in an office use that is already permitted in such a manner.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you.
Questions, Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I'd like to hear a little more detail about this, the Maison Riz type wall that's supposed to be mitigating the sound. I mean, what kind of information do we have that that's really going to work that way? Do we have anything, any other example in town?
We do. We've had other properties submit report, other commercial properties submit reports as to sound attenuation and the types of materials, and I believe that was for the Priest Ranch property, and since then, the town has been conditioning CMU walls. Priest Ranch has one. Handwritten will be conditioned to have one. Stuart Sellers has one, and it's to create a greater buffer. The idea is that wood fences butt up to one another and don't create a solid surface to attenuate sound, but it can go through gaps and cracks, whereas a solid wall it can't.
Okay, all for now, thanks.
On that same line, was there any outreach or any feedback from any of the residents of Burgundy Commons about that change?
Not recently, no, but we've had feedback from many of them that they have faced sound impacts from active uses in the outdoor areas at Maison Riz.
So the assumption is that they would see this as an improvement, whether it's a total mitigation to their satisfaction might be a different issue, but it's an improvement?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
So with regards to this transition from the duplicate wine grower's license to a 42, one of the principal impacts obviously is that minors will not be allowed on the property, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Isn't there a retail diversity policy in place and in force in this facility? Are they already selling something else besides wine?
They are, but not under the retail diversity requirement. It was by choice...
Doesn't it trigger that use?
Potentially, yes, and that hasn't really been addressed. It's to maintain that element of the use that was already approved, and it is retail, so that creates somewhat of a conflict. Correct?
So maybe we can have the town attorney address, I'm not sure how familiar you are with, basically, it's in effect as much an art gallery, retail art gallery, as it is a wine tasting facility?
But is the concern that the conditions are not requiring that element, so that you're concerned they might?
Well, typically, when we have an application for a use or a change in a specific use of a, of a property, we implement the town's retail diversity policy, correct?
Correct.
Is this a change from that strategic direction for the town?
I think what I'm hearing from staff, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the diversity already exists in that it's well above the 25%. Now, your reference originally was about children having access to the property.
Well, that's, that's the one change, and now this retail access now won't be accessible from minors, children, or otherwise.
If I could, you have approved in the past, the council has approved secondary retail that is, for example, you have a cigar lounge that is not accessible to minors. So the, whether the property is open to a minor is not addressed by our retail diversity policy, so I wouldn't say that there's an issue with this change.
My question is secondary to that. Thank you for your clarification. My question is secondary, if the retail that's provided in the facility meets the standard for the retail diversity policy, does that, is, my, my question is, does it meet that standard?
In this case, it happens to meet the standard by the operation of the business, but you are correct that when we see applications, we then condition it to be consistent with the retail diversity policy.
That's what I'm asking.
We have failed to include that here, and we could add that as a condition of approval.
I think, I think as a matter of protocol, it should be included as part of the applicant's condition. I don't, I'm indifferent whether minors come in or not. My, my, the thrust of my discussion here is, I know minors are now disallowed, that's, I'm indifferent to that. My question is, is, does this meet, does it have the condition of that standard that we've implemented upon all the other wine tasting rooms, so that it has that element consistent with policy of the council?
And if I could take that to the next step, that maybe you're getting at, or not, I'll get at it, that they could not eliminate the art component, because then they would be out of compliance.
Correct, thank you.
Or it could be reduced to no less than 25% of the square footage...
Correct.
...of the retail operation.
So then the proposal would be to add a condition, the standard condition that it's applied to all the other similar use permit resolutions?
Correct.
Then that, that other secondary retail could change from art to anything else, as long as it's at least 25% of the square footage of the retail operation?
As long as they have some sort of a retail operation that's consistent with your policy, yeah.
Okay. That, that's, that's the thrust of my...
So you're, you're proposing to staff that that condition be added?
It should be considered, if not added, as a part of our consideration tonight.
And we'll deliberate on that point as we go forward. Councilmember Mueller?
So along that line of thinking, since we're going to be adding that in, do we need to add the other elements that we would with really a new use that we will evaluate it in six months and things like that? Or will this require no evaluation, no staff charge for, you know, evaluating the, the use?
They are subject to the annual use permit monitoring of the business. It was...
Based on this resolution, or?
On earlier resolutions, so they're already part of that program. We believe that the change is simply a license type and that will otherwise operate exactly as is. We do have that opportunity to review it as part of use permit monitoring. I don't know that it necessarily needs a six-month review, but it is something that can be added. At one point, it had that condition, it has satisfied it in the past. We're, of course, amending it and could re-trigger it, but that's up for discussion certainly.
Because that's to the Vice Mayor's point, when I saw the one now therefore be resolved, that we are incorporating his reference, those other resolutions that talk, that speak to the retail diversity policy that we have existing for that business. So that was my assumption, that we didn't need to deal with it. I mean, maybe saying it twice never hurts, but...
Normally, yes, but this business predates that, the retail diversity policy, which is why we would want to include it as a condition. All the other conditions of approval are incorporated.
It's everything. I used to live across the street.
Yeah.
Okay. That is a long time ago.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the staff report? Councilmember Dornbecker?
I do have one, and it's with the type 85 ABC, the new off sale. So my understanding is that the online wine sales and telephone wine sales orders come into Yountville, to that office, is that correct?
Yes.
And do they report on taxes on that?
That's what we understand, yes. They will be booked out of that facility, the office facility.
So the taxes will be reported in Yountville?
They should be, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions at the staff report? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing, invite the applicant to come forward if he or she would like to make any comments, presentation, all of the above, answer questions you've heard. Come on, you've come all this way.
That's so true. We actually have a very straightforward application.
If you could just introduce yourself for the record first?
Jordan Brown with Restoration Hardware. And we have a very straightforward application today, so it's, it's really, we're at your disposal for questions. We do have a, a very abridged PowerPoint which just has the site plan, should there be any additional plan questions, but since there is no design revision being requested tonight, it's really just for reference. And we have a type 42 summary if there are any additional questions as well.
Thank you. Let's find out if we have any questions before we let you get away. Any questions? Councilmember Durham?
Excuse me. So the air conditioning cooling unit, is that correct, that that's in the lower left-hand side?
Correct.
And that's directly butted up against the resident there at Burgundy Commons?
Correct.
How's the CMU going to help that?
Well, the CMU would go behind the...
It will go behind it?
Yes.
Okay.
So it would extend from the south easternmost corner all the way around the L shape up to the parking area to the west.
Thank you. He's going to call me.
Other questions of the applicant? No, that seems fairly straightforward also. Any other members of the applicant team that's here feel any need to get up? I don't think you should feel the need to get up at this point. Thank you. I'll invite any of the members of the public that want to comment on this item to feel free to get up. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and continue further deliberation and potential action on this item. So let's just quickly summarize, Sandra, that you're asking us to address the application for the change in ownership, which needs to happen because there has been a change in ownership, and then the, the real meat of the request is the license change from an O2 to a 42. You've added for our consideration, requiring the eight-foot CMU wall and participating, this would be a new condition, that they participate in the parking management program.
Yes.
And we don't have to come up with specific numbers. I know you've, you've addressed it here, but do we need to evaluate onsite, offsite, employee designated, any of that at this point?
No, we'll work with the applicant on how to implement that program.
Okay, so we have basically four, four points to this. The ownership issue, the CMU wall, the parking management, and then the big one is the license change, or just the fourth one. Okay, so who would like to go first? Councilmember Durham?
Given the, given her findings, I'm fine with all three of those, but I would like to add the retail standard to it as well, correct? Because that was not mentioned.
That's certainly up to motion maker.
So I definitely, I, it needs to be compliant with all the...
To add the condition of the standard 25% minimum?
Yes, yes, please. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Mueller?
I'm also in agreement, and I can make the findings in the resolution, and I also support the retail diversity. And let's have staff monitor that and see how things go after six months.
Thank you. Councilmember Dornbecker?
I concur.
Vice Mayor?
I mean, let's keep it simple. The, the biggest challenge or concern I have is that this predates all these things that when I was first elected to council, we were instructed to make sure that we kept in mind because the town became awash in tasting rooms. And so ensuring that we have some element of diversity, I think, is critical. So I'm comfortable with the remainder of the actions or findings from the staff, and as long as we can have the diversity policy. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate the Vice Mayor bringing that item up just for additional clarification. It is a very straightforward application today. It's hard to not add in what may be happening in the coming weeks and months, so that's what we're just trying to anticipate if we're setting ourselves up for something that we're not prepared to accept down the road. So I can support all the recommendations staff has made with the additional clarity on the one condition for retail diversity to remain in place in the future. With that, is there a motion?
I will make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 16-3348, has amended, approved a use permit amendment for Maison Riz to convert the ABC license from a type duplicate 02 to a type 42, subject to the limitations of the existing wine tasting room permit for the property located at 6711 Washington Street, APN 036-440-001.
And adding?
And adding the retail requirement.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Congratulations, thank you. Okay, we're going to move ahead to our next public hearing, which is a resolution approving a negative declaration for the town of Yountville, general plan amendment related to the town's boundary, potential future growth, and potential annexation. Yes, let's, let's hold on for just a moment as we lose two-thirds of the room. Thank you for coming. Thank you. Okay, Sandra, we're good.
Good evening. Tonight you have before you proposed general plan amendments, and I'd like to share with you what the action before you tonight is and what the action is not. And it is not an application for annexation of the Domain Chandon property. It's not an application to rezone or prezone the Domain Chandon property, and it's not an application to LAFCO to amend the town's sphere of influence. What the application is, is a minor modification to town policies that are found in the general plan, and these policies, if amended, could allow consideration of the actions I've just noticed, if they make economic and environmental sense. But those would come before you at a future point with publicly noticed hearing and further dialogue and analysis and discussion. So let's look to the specific general plan policies that are proposed. The first here relates to the existing relationship and boundary of the town and the surrounding ag, and we are proposing language that that existing boundary be maintained for prime agricultural land and farmland, with the exception of the commercial component of the Domain Chandon property. And we're also proposing to eliminate the protection through the year 2020 to, to leave it more open-ended, since we're quickly approaching that date. The, the second proposed, the second proposed change is to general plan policy D4A, and this relates to future growth and housing units, and the modification is to limit future residential growth to the number of housing units permitted by the general plan, to permit only minor changes to the current limits, and that's the town limit for the commercial component of the Domain Chandon property. The last policy is D4E, and it's the, the existing language says to discourage annexation of ag lands through 2020, and the proposed language is to discourage annexation of prime farmland and prime ag land and land planted with vineyards, to strongly support the protection of agriculture, but consider the annexation of the commercial component of Domain Chandon. And again, we're eliminating, proposing to eliminate the 2020 timeline, which is soon to expire. So the core of these, the, the goal in proposing these amendments is to uphold the core of these policies for the protection of agriculture and for a very limited exception as it relates to Domain Chandon, and it's for the Domain Chandon property only. It's for those commercial components that are already developed and that are connected to the town's wastewater system. It will not apply to other agricultural land or uses in the county. And this map here shows the property in question. The red border is the town boundary, and that small carve-out in the central area to the left would, represents the planning area, and that's the Domain Chandon property. And again, I'd just like to note that we are only looking to the Domain Chandon property as the expansion of the town's planning area, not any other agricultural property, and that it's been served by the town's wastewater system and commercially developed and used for decades. So in preparation for the general plan amendments, staff conducted CEQA review, and we conducted an initial study and a negative declaration that's before you tonight. Those studies were supported by three different reports and further study, the first of which was the onsite wastewater capacity analysis, and that report concluded that the superior environmental alternative is for the town municipal wastewater system to continue to serve the Domain Chandon property. This protects ag by keeping existing vineyards and ag production, rather than having to remove those vineyards to accommodate an onsite wastewater system. The second report is a growth-inducing impact study, and it concludes that the proposed general plan amendments do not induce growth. There are no new services required, no new employees, and it does not lead to an increased housing demand. The third study that is included in the initial study is the fiscal analysis, and we are hopeful that this can be used in future discussions with the county. And I would like to note that recently, the county has expressed renewed interest in resuming the two-by-two discussions that were held... the two-by-two discussions that were held in 2013 and 2014, and those consisted of Mayor Dunbar and Councilmember Mueller representing the town with two members of the Board of Supervisors. And we believe this is an effort to find a mutually beneficial solution to some of the inequities found on the Domain Chandon property. And I would express that the town council has always remained open to this discussion, and we would really welcome this opportunity to open the discussions again. So, the conclusion of the NEG deck is that there are no significant environmental improvements, and that will be one of our actions before you later tonight. When circulating the NEG deck, we did receive two responses that are included in your packet. One is from Cultural Resources, the other is from the existing county executive officer, Nancy Watt, and there's also a response letter from the town manager, Rogers. Since the publication and distribution of the staff report, we've received two additional communications, one from Eric Knight and one from county planning director, David Morrison. We've shared these communications with each of you on the dais. So, we are asking that you take three actions tonight. The first is to approve a resolution adopting a negative declaration for the general plan amendment, and this is based on the initial study and the companion reports that conclude there are no potentially significant environmental impacts of this action. The second action we ask you to approve is a resolution amending the three general plan policies that I shared with you in the slideshow, and to add a map for Yountville Planning Area that includes a portion of the Domain Chandon property. And you have a revised resolution at each of your seats tonight. It corrects the Scrivener's error, but really does not change the substance of the document before you. And the last resolution we are approving, we are recommending approval, is committing to the continued dialogue with the county before taking any action to annex the commercial component of Domain Chandon. And this is based on the county's renewed interest in resuming the two-by-two committee and really the town's ongoing willingness to have these discussions. So, those are the actions before you tonight, and I'm free to answer any questions should you have them.
Thank you. So, you've already recognized the email correspondence that we received. I just wanted to bring that up again. I was going to mention it in public comment, but just so that they're recognized and part of the record. Questions of the staff report? Councilmember Durham, I thought you were reaching for the mic.
I am.
Okay.
Can you, can you explain to me briefly the, in the letter from, sorry, from the...
David Morrison?
Thank you. The urban limit line that he discusses in the letter?
Yes. Communities generally have urban limit lines in addition to the planning area, and it identifies really the future ultimate limits of a city. The town doesn't have an urban limit line, and in the town's entire history, its sphere of influence has been co-terminous with the town's boundary. That alone is more unusual because cities and towns generally have room to grow and have that, the buffer built in for growth. And the urban limit line is really along those same lines. The idea being that you only grow so far, and beyond that, you protect open space and agriculture and other more native environments.
Thank you.
So, to clarify that, the town limit line would be the current existing, and if we had an urban limit line, that would be what was already approved to potentially expand into?
I think the urban limit line requires specific approval as to that. That wasn't something we analyzed in the NEG deck, so it's not before you tonight as the establishment of a new line for the town.
No, I'm not saying that that's our intent at all. I'm just trying to clarify the definitions.
It's essentially the same thing, yes, without it being named an urban limit line.
The fact that it's unusual that we have the same boundary, and that typically, if a city, say the city of Napa, had its city limits and an urban limit line that was not the same footprint.
Yes. Our town limit essentially functions as an urban line without it being a specifically approved and acknowledged formal urban limit line.
So, you're satisfied with that?
Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
Councilmember Mueller, any questions at this point? Councilmember Dornbecker?
I do have one of the matters. In reading, you know, this, this doesn't specify, the amendment, the change that we want to make to the general plan doesn't specifically, isn't specifically designed just for the annexation of Domain Chandon's commercial, that's correct?
It is aimed at discussing the town's boundary and limits. Since it is specific to a domain, it definitely acknowledges that. It's not its sole purpose, though.
Yeah, I think to amplify what you're saying there, Sandra, and to clarify, Councilmember Dornbecker, it reinforces the protection, and I think that's an important statement, that those policies, with the specific exception recognizing that we have the sewer connected to the commercial, it's reinforcing that the, this council and this town values the agricultural protection, and it doesn't allow for, I mean, it's very limiting. And in fact, that's why we've removed the 2020, because that continuation would have expired under the 1992 general plan amendment. That language had the copyout of 2020. We've taken it out in this proposed so that it reinforces the ongoing continued agricultural protection. So, I do think it's really important to realize that the principal standings of all of these policies are actually to reinforce and protect that Yountville will not go out and annex agricultural land. We have one little footnote, which is the commercially developed, and I think we need to keep stressing this, and I'm, we'll have to apply it common sense, but that area has been developed urbanly and commercially since 1990. There are no grapes, no ag involved in this conversation, and more importantly, it's been stressed, this is just the, a general plan policy to allow that and get those things in line with each other.
So, what I'm hearing, I'm not sure that that was, I didn't hear that as your exact answer to your exact question. What I heard you asking is, could this happen somewhere other than the Domain Chandon property? And I believe what you should be saying is, no, it cannot happen anywhere else.
Correct.
It can only apply, if it's going to apply at all, it's going to apply to this one small section of commercially developed and operating property on the Domain Chandon parcel.
Exactly.
It cannot be used to expand anywhere else.
And that's what this map is intended to illustrate, and the specific wording of each of the policy changes themselves.
Does that answer your question?
Well, and what about the eastern, you know, the eastern limitations of the town?
No, that's why I want to say, it's really important because you're onto something. The policy, if you can go back to the policy, because it really does say that it's limiting. The mayor's correct. We are saying there will be no annexations into agricultural land. So, we're surrounded by that. So, I do think it's really important that we're reinforcing the no annexation with the limited exception. I think you're spot on.
With this one exception.
I'm thinking of, I know that there is a vineyard that abuts to the town limits on the east side that has been, you know, turned into six lots. It's divided into six lots.
That, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that was county action. That's county property, has nothing to do with the town.
I understand that.
Yeah, so, the core of this policy you see here is upheld. It is to discourage annexation of prime agricultural land. There is carved out a very limited exception for Domain Chandon only. It's shown in the map as the town's planning area, and the planning area is not shown to the east of town. It's not shown in any other way as an expansion of the town's planning area. So...
The reference is to the Fennel Road property.
I understand that. What I'm getting at is, if we make this change to the general plan in general, rather than specifically for Domain Chandon, then if those six lots in the county that get, that abut to the town line and get developed into also additional vineyards, does that mean we have no, no way that we would ever reach out to, you know, extend to those commercial buildings?
Under these policies, yes. These are very specific to Domain Chandon only. It's not a general policy statement that leaves it open to expand to those other vineyards or areas.
With the caveat, though, it depends on the, whether at that time, the property would still meet the definition, I mean, of prime agricultural land or land planted with existing vineyards, and in your hypothetical, the vineyards would be gone. I don't know that this would clearly say no to that proposal, but I think it would be an uphill walk to try to convince Lafco that that sort of an annexation was consistent with that language. But this doesn't say that you could never annex anything except Domain Chandon, but it pretty strongly discourages it, and it flat-out in other places prohibits it with respect to prime agricultural land.
All right. That's all I wanted to get at, because we anticipate that there will be commercial development that will also abut the town on the east side.
Well, let's be clear about what was approved. It's not commercial development.
That's correct.
It's not commercial, hold on. It's residential development. The parcel in question that you're talking about, south of Fennel Road, that the county determined was by an agent map allowable to be developed for residential use, that's the six parcels for residential, not commercial, so residential, and you're talking about, could the town absorb that once it was built into housing?
No, I don't mean it that way, but I mean, if those, because those six parcels are at least 10 acres each, they could be developed into boutique wineries. That's why, that's what I'm talking about, commercial development.
And let's, okay, we need to clarify, that does not actually mean, when we say here, we're talking about commercially zoned, so the CL zoning, commercial development. The county has a whole different language for winery.
Winery uses, yeah, okay.
No, that's a good, now that we've got that clarified.
The development of a winery and the supporting facilities are considered agriculture rather than commercial. What's different here is that they are commercial uses that wouldn't be permitted in the county, especially with regards to the restaurant.
Okay. Thank you very much for the clarification.
Any other questions, vice mayor? Any questions? Any other questions?
So, then that's the answer to his other statement, that the characterization of the parcel, he's saying that the winery is long-held that the operations and ancillary uses are intrinsic parts of agriculture, but the restaurant would not be in the middle of agriculture. Correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
So, to be clear, the, first of all, we're not talking about any annexation of any property on Chandon. I want to repeat that.
Absolutely.
What is, what has been discussed and will be further discussed with the county is the fact that there has been commercial operation happening in county, on county property and county-zoned ag land that is commercial in nature. And the only way that that commercial activity was allowed originally was based on the fact that they either have onsite wastewater, a wastewater system onsite that could satisfy the additional commercial operation, or they connect to the Town of Yountville. And that's, that's the reason that we're even talking about this very small segment. It has nothing to do with us trying to reach beyond our boundary. It's to fulfill the inclusion of a small parcel that was apparently agreed upon to be included back in the early 90s.
Yes.
We're not there yet. We're just talking about amending our own local general plan that would allow us to continue to have that process move forward.
Correct.
Okay. We're going to see how this goes. Hello, Mr. Perez. I'm going to go ahead with no additional questions, open the public hearing and invite, since we're kind of the applicant ourselves, invite any members of the public that would like to comment. I'm thinking Mr. Perez has come all this way, he's got to have something to say. Welcome. Is this your first time in here?
No, actually, it isn't.
Okay. Well, welcome back then.
Well, thank you. CEO Perez, representing Napa County Farm Bureau, and Farm Bureau has taken a position of opposing the proposed general plan amendments, effectively because it is removing lands from the county and effectively incorporating them into the city, or the Town of Yountville. And we would be discouraging this from any movement as far as any city that we have or town that we have here in the county. It's not just Yountville. It's the idea, it's somewhat the direction that this begins in regards to threatening, in our opinion, other areas of the county, not just around Yountville. So, there's a couple of things. One is, is you can't kid yourself that this action that you're considering tonight doesn't or isn't part of the movement to annex the area you're talking about for Domain Chandon. I mean, it's a precursor. If you don't do this tonight, you can't do it. And we were hoping, or we hope, that you don't take this step and effectively show that you are, in fact, extremely strong and staying strong in regards to protecting agriculture. And you can kid yourself in saying, well, this isn't agriculture, this is commercial. And as, as the mayor knows, through Farm Bureau's participation with APAC, there's a lot of things that the county is allowing within the so-called winery uses that we're concerned about, because I think, and Farm Bureau thinks, that a lot of these issues that are being presented to the county in the form of requests and permits and called marketing would be extremely beneficial if these were directed more towards the cities and towns that we have here in the county, and effectively keep that intense commercial aspect out of farmlands. Because if you're considering competing with farming and setting it up that way, effectively, the grapes aren't, aren't important anymore in regards to the operation. Winery's become just a backdrop for the purposes of events, and that, I think, is a very dangerous step. And again, we're conversing with the county, and we would hope, as a town council, that you would be including that as part of your discussions in regards to what the county has allowed to happen effectively over the last 15, 20 years. Again, going back to what you're planning to do tonight, doing tonight, these amendments, again, are for the sole purposes of annexing that 13.5 or less acres that we're talking about as far as the commercial aspect of the domain operation. But again, these operations are still effectively tied to an existing winery that is operating, and again, as part of their marketing programs and effectively their cash flow. Now, there's been a lot of things that have happened before. I mean, we can consider Mondavie's, we can consider Domain. There are other farmlands out there that have allowed uses that hopefully in today's climate would not have been allowed at all. I think the proposal of winery, or winery connected with a restaurant, am I doing something wrong?
Have your cellphone on?
Oh.
It might be.
However, there are cases that have been created in our past that have effectively considered today would not be allowed. This, I think, would be one of those. So, it's somewhat unique, but it's still, it's still an expansion of your boundaries that isn't necessary, in our opinion, but there can be other avenues taken to satisfy the needs of the Town of Yountville in regards to the services rendering to this particular part of Domain. And we would hope that that would be the direction you choose to take, other than the annexation, trying to develop different rates of pay that the domain has to consider or pay so that the services rendered by the Town of Yountville are actually paid for and not subsidized in any manner. And... I thought I was thinking of it, but again, in considering what you're looking at tonight...
Well, that's one way to stop.
Usually, I'm three minutes of the county, but I don't really like it.
Yeah, that's it. No, we don't have a bell.
You were just taking away.
But again, am I speaking loud enough so it'll be picked up by...
We actually, we need to make sure it stays recorded and everything. We're worldwide right now. We're live worldwide, so...
Oh, okay. Great.
Sort of.
So, I don't need to speak Spanish, though, right?
Your prerogative.
Your prerogative. I do well in the vineyard, but in discussions like this, I don't think I have the adequate vocabulary. In any regards, again, this is a movement for annexation. You can't hide it under any other approach. And I would hope that the town council would see it that way as far as a bad direction that the town of Yountville, I would hope, wouldn't want to take. And effectively that's diminishing the ag preserve, the need to protect agriculture as a whole, even though this again, from a financial standpoint, may make sense for the town of Yountville. It's a bad idea when you're, when you're doing land use purely for physical reasons and fiscal reasons. So you want to be important in regards to your choice. And again, I think there's other avenues that would help cover the town of Yountville financially in regards to the services you're rendering. And that's not just the sewer service, but also what was mentioned in the report in regards to the roads and other things that, you know, the town of Yountville has to maintain and address and a cost to the town. All of these things, I think, can be incorporated in a method of charge to that use, that domain is being provided as far as a service. But again, it's, I saw in several places, the word minimal was used or minor or any, anything else that would reduce the importance of this action that you're considering tonight. And you've got to keep it in perspective in regards to what is happening. And it's been said many times before, is the ag preserve isn't going to be diminished by huge blocks at a time. The threat is truly from things that are one acre, half an acre, 13 and a half acres. It's the smaller stuff that can be explained away as very minor, minimal, or any of that sort of word in regards to the description. So again, Farm Bureau would encourage you to not consider these amendments or not pass these amendments. Certainly consider them, but we would hope that you would understand the importance of this action and the likelihood that it opens up a lot of doors and creates, I think, a lot of divisiveness in regards to ag and cities and towns. And we certainly would hope that we do our best efforts in regards to working cooperatively with one another. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Before I let you get away, I've got a couple of questions for you, if you're in mind. Considering the circumstances, you're obviously very familiar with the status quo condition, which is there's a commercial operation going on in county property that's connected to municipal service.
I understand.
For its, for its existence. So the Farm Bureau is taking the position that we should leave that as it is and let it continue?
That would be our position and, but.
Even though that violates the county's own general plan?
Well, in this situation, because of the history and because, again, I think, given today's climate and today's policies, not just for the towns, the county, also Lafco, is the extension of municipal services to outside of boundaries has become somewhat of an approach for, I think, towns in general and cities in general, so that it would be held, it would be dealt with a lot differently. In fact, the likelihood of that restaurant existing today, if it weren't already there, is, I think, nil, just because of how important it has become in regards to what we've developed since the ag preserve in Measure J and now Measure P. So we're trying to do our best in regards to looking into the future and dealing with what exists today and still trying to deal with some issues and problems that were developed before I got involved in regards to politics, but certainly in the past where certain visions just weren't seen at the time. So again, I would encourage the town of Yountville to look at the ability or the possibility of rates and in that manner, being able to recoup the real cost to the town of Yountville and providing the services. But the other thing that makes me a little bit nervous is the elimination of the 2020 date, in that if you're not replacing it with another date, then that's an open door too. Now, if you're, if you're, it's probably not going to be time enough for discussion tonight, but I would encourage the town of Yountville to say, listen, you know, in any of the developed or changed parts of the general plan, that you maintain a date specific that you're making as a promise to all the communities in Napa County, that you're not going to be doing this for that period of time. If you don't include that date, you can be making these minimal or minor changes forever and you're not holding to anything. So again, just think of that as well.
So, and I'll have our town attorney comment on the language, including a date or not including a date. When you include a date, you automatically have a sunset period. When you don't include a date, that stands without expiration, which is what the reason for the language change is being proposed. But the other question I had for you is, how do you see this situation in relationship to the city of Napa and the county of Napa with the Napa Pipe development and the transition of municipal services for housing and county land? Do you see that as related? Because you're opposed to any ag land being converted to municipal land or any service or commercial service. So just your thoughts on the comparison.
Want me to comment on that? The Farm Bureau was opposed to taking those lands into the city of Napa and we were hoping that it would be a smaller portion of Napa Pipe and for the purposes of affordable housing. That's not what, that's not what happened on the political level and on a national level. A lot more, well, Napa Pipe was effectively marked for annexation. It was included in the sphere of influence of this, for the city of Napa, and that's the precursor to making it a part of the city and annexing. The other part of that was the well issue, and I'm not sure if you, you may be familiar with that. We thought we had a victory in regards to saving the groundwater for ag use and there was a move to effectively include that with the resources for water for the city of Napa, but we were successful in having that changed. However, much like the town of Yountville, the well can still be used in cases of emergency, which again is, is an attempt at working cooperatively between farming and towns and needs, especially under emergency situations. Now, the other thing that bothers me a little bit, I'm sorry to kind of jump around here, mayor, but the use of the word prime ag. If prime ag were, depending on its definition, it would eliminate almost all of carneros in regards to farming because of shallow depths as far as top soils and the lack of water. In fact, when I was growing up, nobody ever thought about planting grapes and carneros. You know, the smart thing is, is we didn't plant Camperdane. However, I think, again, it's a mistake in using the term prime ag land. You ought to just say ag lands. Again, because some soils are better than others for reasons of soil depth, of composition, but more often than not, you can find a root stock that can do quite well in regards to any soil condition, any water availability. So farming can still happen. So the, the, the marking of prime ag lands, I think, is a mistake as well.
I believe that was a county term that we just repeated. Actually, it was already listed, but.
You've got to be careful as far as repeating after the county, in some cases, so.
You know who's sitting behind you right now.
Yeah, I know. But in any case, again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak in regards to your considerations of the general plan amendments you're considering. And I would encourage you to not take that step and try and find other avenues that might be hopefully better, but certainly wouldn't include the steps towards annexation.
Thank you, Mr. Press. Appreciate it. Any other members of the public like to comment tonight? Seeing no others, I'll close the public hearing and have further deliberation discussion with council. And I think maybe there might be some advantage before we get into deliberation, to have a little more clarity from staff on, and this is a little bit in response to Mr. Press' public comment, to clarify, prime ag land was a term that was basically repeated from designation that the county has defined.
No, we selected the term prime farm land because of the link to U.S. Department of Agricultural terms that are known and understood as to land used for agriculture, and we thought it provided better definition than just loosely referencing ag.
To try to be even more specific about this one particular parcel?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then the other point, I think maybe we should just get some clarity on the dialogue that has taken place with the county and the reason we're at this point, just to make sure that the public is caught up to speed a little bit, not the full PowerPoint presentation, but a brief synopsis.
I'll try. I think what we've had is a series of conversations with the county on how to rectify some inequities. And in some of this, it's not as simple as saying, adjust the rate, because since the original contract with Domain Chandon, we have Prop 26 and Prop 218, which govern rate structure. So there's some things like that and we don't simply have the ability to charge a fee for all of the vehicles that go on city streets to get onto our town streets and then get onto. So part of the broader conversation, and I will bring you to the third resolution that Planning Director referenced, we're more than willing, and in fact, that resolution talks about the fact that the council's committed to a re-engagement with the county in a dialogue with the goal, and I will say this, with the goal of coming up with a solution short of annexation. But I think it would be imprudent on our part as staff to doing our job to not advise you that not having the policy in place that allows us. Having this policy there is necessary from a Lafco perspective, and I won't disagree with the statement that it's a potential precursor, but it's not the town's intent. And that's why that companion resolution clearly talks about giving ourselves six months to sit down, negotiate with the county and willing, and we're very encouraged by the change in dialogue, we are optimistic that that process will deliver a mutually beneficial solution. Over the last three years, the process that we've had has not resulted in a dialogue that has acknowledged the inequity in a approach. So I think that's my Reader's Digest short version.
And the only other element I would add is the timing of this is in large part due to the fact that we're nine years into a five-year maximum review by Lafco and we're finally on Lafco's calendar for this year. And to meet the filing for their sphere of influence review, we needed to move forward, it was about a month ago or six weeks ago at this point, to stay on their calendar for even consideration of our general plan conditions. So maybe you could just address that very quickly.
Correct. Lafco is doing the current review, the municipal service review and sphere of influence update, and we do expect an administrative draft within the next several weeks. We think it's important to address these general plan policies in their review in order to obtain a positive recommendation as to a change in sphere of influence. We know back in 2007, when they conducted the review, they suggested that there was merit in provide, in including Domain Chandon within the town's sphere of influence, but the fatal flaw was the fact that our general plan policies ran contrary to that. So this is an effort to align those policies.
But again, I get the feeling it can't be stated too many times, that this is not the request for annexation or.
Correct.
Any increase in the sphere of influence. This is to even allow us to have a dialogue in the future so we, if we so choose, or otherwise.
It's to receive a positive.
Lafco would say, you're out of your own compliance and you can't come and talk to us.
It's to receive a positive recommendation from Lafco on the town's ultimate sphere of influence, which will lead to those discussions in the future. And it's not automatically an application for annexation, but more the opportunity and the discussions that it opens up.
But if the town is successful in conversations with the county, that we reach a mutually agreeable and beneficial solution, there will be no future conversations necessary.
Right, right.
And then I would argue, you still have a very strong and proactive general plan policy statement on very, you know, limiting annexation. That policy is very strong about thou shall not annex, the town will not seek property outside of its existing boundaries.
Yeah, and so town attorney, the question I was alluding to about to include a sunset date versus not including any date at all, what are your thoughts on the pros and cons of that?
In a nutshell, not including a date is, in my opinion, a stronger protection against future annexations. What it says is that the policy is indefinite as opposed to limited in time. So by saying discourage annexation through 2020, to my mind, that says in 2021, annex away, have fun. If you don't have annex, discourage annexation through the year 2020, it simply means discourage annexation, period, until the next time you amend it.
Into perpetuity.
In perpetuity, except with the caveat, of course, and the point was made, that you can always go back and make these little changes. Well, that is true, generally speaking. So whether you include the date or not, if the public is concerned about the fact that the council can amend its general plan to allow for changes or make minor modifications, that's true always. You always have that ability.
Well, only based on a certain cycle, we can only, we only have the ability to make four changes every cycle.
But including the date or not including the date does not prevent you from amending this in the future, from making minor modifications, from allowing or discouraging annexation at any one of those points. I guess it's the point I'm trying to make, is that you, you do have that authority in your legislative capacity. But by not putting a date in, I think you're sending a stronger policy message that you're discouraging annexations in general and into the foreseeable future.
And I think the reason that Mr. Press brings this up is that, you know, with our ag preserve and we've had Measure J, Measure P, that have had sunset clauses and one needed to follow the other because of the sunset clause, that has been the language in the past, I think, trying to basically make a very strong statement, at least until the deadline, and then you need to push the deadline. So if your opinion, cut out that step and keep the deadline in perpetuity.
I'm not sure about the context of the other sunset clauses, but here, I certainly think without a date, it's a stronger prohibition. And if you, and if you were to analogize it to other types of statutes, you put in a sunset clause because you're not sure about the policy you're setting forth and you want to ensure that it's revisited fairly quickly, because you don't actually want to prohibit the action that you're talking about forever. You want to prohibit it for 20 years and then come back and look at it again. But if you're sure, if you're making a strong statement against a particular activity, you would never put a sunset date on it. That's something you do when you're not sure, generally.
Thank you.
I did, though, also want to make one quick comment.
Yes.
If I may, on the question of definition of prime agricultural land, and I know it ultimately references federal law and regulations, but it also is a term that the county uses and it's included in California, the Williamson Act, the Agricultural Act of 1965 or something. And so it has a definition that I'm not sure if it would eliminate carneros, I really don't know, but it's a fairly broad definition that covers a fair amount of fruit and nut-bearing trees. I think it would apply to virtually all of the agricultural land around the town, although we haven't specifically looked into that to form an opinion. But I think it's a much broader definition of a term than maybe has been suggested in public comment.
And so one last question, a protocol issue potentially. If the council's discussion leads to the desire to approve the staff recommendations as presented, but defer their implementation as a way to continue to reinforce our interest in dialogue with the county, do you think that's appropriate or the fact that additional resolution that's in place that says we are. that says we are committing to that dialogue is sufficient?
May I clarify what you mean by delay in implementation?
If we were to say we're interested in making the general plan amendments effective date in the future, following dialogue, if there is not a, that just clouds the whole thing.
Yeah, I'd have two responses to it. One is that I don't know what kind of dialogue you can have. If you've already made the decision to make the change, and it's just effective later, then the dialogue sort of seems, I don't know what you'd be talking about, because you've already done it.
I'm not necessarily in favor of the idea, it's just an idea.
Yeah, I don't see how it could be feasible, no. It doesn't make a lot of sense. And if your goal, and I think it's a very wise move on the town's part to try to get this done before the Municipal Service Review and Sphere of Influence is updated, if that's the goal, then the decision and the effective date of the decision needs to be soon, as in right away.
Right, okay.
But, and also, I should point out, too, it hasn't really been fully explained here, although there's plenty of places you can read the process for annexation, there are many, many, many steps to even begin the process of annexation. And many of them revolve around town-county dialogue. So between today and even an application for annexation, there are many, many opportunities, some of them mandatory, for that dialogue you're discussing. So it's important for the public and everyone to know that we're a long way from even taking the first procedural steps, and there's much dialogue to be done until then. So if we're talking about steps, all the council is considering doing now is removing an obstacle. No step has actually really been taken. You're still standing in the same spot you were, you're just moving a box out of the way.
That we put in our, that we put in place for ourselves.
Yes, and you're moving it as little as you possibly can. As was pointed out in the dialogue with Councilmember Dormbecker, this exception is precisely the size of a door opening you need to discuss the one tiny little parcel you're addressing. So you're only moving the obstacle to the minimum amount necessary to proceed, to even have a discussion.
And can you speak to the concern, you know, that really is in play here, is that any action that we might be taking, I don't think it has anything to do with the action being proposed tonight, but as Mr. Perez indicated, this, we're not even trying to pretend that this isn't part of the conversation about what can happen in the future. We acknowledge that, absolutely. We're not taking that step, but that is in the realm of possibility. Can you speak to how this does or does not relate to any other conditions in the county? That I think that's what there is a concern about, that if this action is taken, it makes it easier for somebody else to take a different action in a different set of circumstances. I'm getting at, this is a very unique, and I think a non-precedent setting, a set of circumstances, based on the relationship that we have with county, the town of Yountville, and Domain Chandon, and documentation that was put forth in the early 90s that said that this was going, this was supposed to all happen back in the early 90s.
So first of all, if there's any precedent being set, it's only with respect to this town, because it's your decision, it's your policy. So if there is precedent, it's not going to make anything easier for Calistoga, or St. Helena, or any other municipality in the county to make a similar kind of change. They have their own precedent, they have their own policies, they're individual entities. To the extent that you're making a change to the town's precedent, you are, but it's minimal in the sense that it doesn't even narrowly define the allowed consideration of annexation by type. It actually names the property and identifies it on a map, right? So it couldn't even be that somebody establishes a similar use elsewhere contiguous to your property, to your boundary, and then you could apply this policy to seek annexation of it, because your policy actually names the one spot that's an exception to your prohibition. So I don't think you're setting precedent even to yourselves. That's how little of a
It's so narrowly focused, we aren't effectively saying that by doing Domain Chandon, that unless something else were named Domain Chandon, there wouldn't be no, there's no precedent.
That's right.
Now, this parcel's even identified by parcel number, so it can't be
There is no precedent.
Well, there's no replication of the action that this allows elsewhere.
Right, that's right.
But Director Morrison refers to other properties directly abutting up to us and saying this could set precedents for that.
They don't abut up to us.
Um, sorry.
I don't see how that's true.
None of them.
None of them. Rix is not, Elise is not, and
Hill.
Hill. None of them are. They're not co-terminals.
Very good.
And all three of your changes actually say the word Domain Chandon in them, as a limiting adjective, basically, as a limiting identifier. I don't see how this could possibly be used to apply to any of those other properties. And I mentioned before, you know, your definition of prime agricultural land, in 12.1, you're discouraging annexation. But if you look at all three together, in 1.1, you're specifically limiting the boundary line to its existing boundary line, except for this one little change. And then in the final, you're, no, the final one is the one that says discourage, but in the other two, it's more specific and more limiting. It's just this one that's up on the slide now that has the language like discourage annexation, which could theoretically open the door, but your other changes are specific to lines.
And further reinforcing that, Councilmember Durham, you mentioned the letter from Mr. Morrison. If you look at our policy statements, we talk about, and we include the phrase, presently served by the town's wastewater system. None of those other, there is no other property adjacent to the town that the town serves. So we further limit this, and any action to add something would be inconsistent with our own general plan policy. So again, it's really not a replicable situation, and we're reinforcing and amplifying the longstanding policy of the town of Yountville to protect and encourage the ag preserve.
Any other questions of town, or shall we continue deliberation and consideration? Councilmember Durham, comments?
Yeah, and as the newest council member on here, please, if I misspeak, or if I understand something incorrectly moving forward, please let me know. Sometimes I speak off the cuff. But I want to be clear that we did start this process before this in attempting to make communication with the county. Is that correct?
2013.
Over two years ago, yeah.
Okay, very good. I just want to make that absolutely clear. And I want to thank the Farm Bureau as well, because after reading all of these emails and trying to understand them, it was a lot more clear and a lot better understanding for me. So I appreciate that. At the same time, I, you know, I brag to my friends who come up here about the agricultural preserve, and I love the fact that the town cannot be built out anymore, and I'm fortunate enough to live here. I also find it interesting, and quite a leap, to discuss the issues that the wineries are having with the county, and therefore, we shouldn't be doing that, but in fact, we're trying to negotiate with those exact entity that's dealing with those wineries. So I find it very interesting that, as my father said, "Do as I say, not as I do." So I just, I've read this, and once again, as the newest member on here, I've read this, and I've understood this, and tried to understand it. I just don't see, I understand the ag preserve, I respect it, I just, as a member of this community who answers to our constituents, too, in terms of the amount of money that is going out and the amount of repairs, I think we owe something to the community of Yountville as well. So I support moving forward with this general plan amendment. Thank you.
Councilmember Dormbecker?
I have been involved in the conversation with our council members for over two years about this, and I'm familiar with the history from 1990 because it was presented to us. And at no time during the previous two years did we ever, to my knowledge, limit this conversation to having to be annexed and brought into the town limits. It has always been about reaching a fair and equitable agreement with this county, because it was asked of us, because the county, when Domain Chandon wanted to open the restaurants and everything, the county looked at their wastewater needs and what they were going to be, and makes the world, if you do that, you're going to have to take out two acres of grapevines. And the county didn't agree, and Domain Chandon didn't want to do that, so they asked us to provide them with wastewater management system, access to our wastewater. And that preserved those extra two acres, actually, of vines. And we did that in good faith. At the time, there was talk of that commercial part of Domain Chandon becoming a part of our town. In looking at it from today's point of view, we feel aggrieved that the Planning Commissioner, after many conversations going back and forth at that time, came back and just sort of wrote us out of the whole deal. And so I feel that there's some sort of redress in that what we would like to do is to have this honest and true discussion, because we do feel that we were taken advantage of, and we are, we deserve to have a conversation with the county about restitution, in my mind. This is not speaking just for me now. But we've been working with this for two years, and we did reach out, and Mayor Dunbar and Councilmember Muller negotiated with, in good faith, with Supervisor Caldwell and Supervisor Lewis, who it seemed dismissed our whole, the whole conversation. And that's, you know, I think that the point is, we do want to work with the county to come to a good resolution in one way or another. And we have to have this obstacle out of the way in order to proceed to do that. That's the way I look at it.
Thank you. Councilmember Muller?
I think what I'm, I think that we'll never know exactly what happened back in 1991. The paper trails on both sides are somehow just gone. So I ask myself the question, if this issue came up today, what would I do? Would I dismiss it out of hand? No, I don't think so. At least, I would suggest that, let's talk about it. Do we want to take lands out of the ag preserve and not consider hooking up our wastewater to Domain? I would want to have that conversation. So that's what I can deal with now, is if this was brought to me today, I want to have that conversation. Not sure where it's going to go, but it is something that we would have to then prospectively update our sphere of influence and our municipal service agreement. And now we're just in the case of retrospectively going through that, because this was already a done deal in 1991. So, but as I can say that as having, if I would be open, which I would be, to having that conversation, if it was brought to me today as a fresh idea, I would also want consideration. I think that is in the public good for the citizens of Yountville. And I think that's exactly, we've been very clear, we've been very open to that's what we want to have by this conversation. I think we're actually making forward steps with the county by moving ahead in the way that we're doing. We had our two-by-two meetings, they went nowhere. Lafco has now contacted us and said we're going to do this. So our municipal service agreement review, in addition to the sphere of influence, which is going to be done at the same time. So we are acting on their behalf, at their request. And so I'm agreeing that this is the proper step that we should be taking at this time. So, that's where I'm standing.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Serving as a town council member, we have fiduciary responsibility to the residents of this community, and frankly, to the businesses and all of us that are, you know, here, sitting in this building that's now seismically retrofitted. But it didn't get there because we allowed all the other services that we were giving away to not be reimbursed for. And I see this as being something that, in the town of Yountville, we are providing service to this tiny, tiny component of what is an extremely large organization, and I'll get to that. But this is a movement for a potential annexation. Without it, without these items tonight, the town has no teeth and has no option or leverage to negotiate. That's the reality. And so I'm not suggesting annexation. I'm suggesting giving ourselves the option to negotiate for some sort of revenue share with the county. But the county doesn't want to play ball that way, so we need to take this step. We pay for the roads up there, the sewer and the infrastructure, and this community has taken rate increases. We have to manage and support all of that. That's our responsibility on this dais, to tax the payer for the services that they get. And I recognize that we can do that. But there are additional infrastructure costs that don't get recovered, and this gives us an opportunity to do that. I disagree that the 13.2 acres that is so narrowly defined and specifically identified could be considered agricultural preserve. Frankly, ancillary use to that winery is a unique way of presenting it. It could not be farmland. It is a building, or buildings. It is a restaurant and a tasting room. It is not ever going to be farmland. That's a reality. Tying their cash flow to that restaurant is far-fetched. This is LVMH. They may be by far and away the largest private corporation in the planet. I don't think their cash flow is dependent upon what's going on up there. It is not, it is not a direct relation to their winery business. I can assure you that, knowing a little bit about finance. I do agree with what's been presented, that this expansion of the boundary actually further protects the ag land, and I think it's imperative upon this council for our community to reiterate that. And it's difficult, and it's a complex set of steps that we're presenting here, but what we are actually doing is so narrow and specific to what we're trying to accomplish, for the residents, and frankly, the constituents of all the people sitting in here, and the people living in this community, we're just looking for recovery, and we can't get that until we take this next step. I'm in support in general of these items, and I trust that we'll take the right action and move forward, and we'll do it in the right way, and we'll work with the county. That's an action we want to adopt, is to have that dialogue and to come to resolution. It's easy enough to accomplish, we need to get to the table.
Thank you. And I agree with everything you just said, Vice Mayor, and I appreciate the way you put that. I also want to reinforce the fact that, first and foremost, we have a responsibility to the citizens of the town of Yountville, and to protect their interests. And that's the main motivation for the dialogue we've been having for two-plus years. Why this condition has lasted since the early 90s, anybody can have that conversation and try to figure that out. It, all along, I have had the very strong belief, and I maintain it based on our addition, you know, the reinforcement of our attorney's evaluation, this is not precedent-setting in any way for anywhere else in Napa County. And I know that's the concern. People feel like this is the first domino of the thousand dominos that may ultimately have a negative impact on the Napa Valley. There is literally no possibility of the conditions being replicated anywhere else in the county. Now, if we didn't have paperwork from the early 90s that said, "If this, then that, if the town hooks up Domain Chandon's additional commercial operation to the wastewater system, then the land must be annexed," that language was very clear. Even the county was recommending that to have that action taken. The county was also speaking staff, at the staff level, that they were concerned about The county was also speaking staff, at the staff level, that they were concerned about losing the tax revenue. And then when we stepped forward, after our town manager identified the inequity after decades, we have been told that we're out of line, that it's on us now to protect the interests of the entire county and the behavior that the county and the board of supervisors have taken over the last 30 years. And that we shouldn't be concerned about our residents, first and foremost. It's often heard from the county that we're all county residents. And that's true, until any jurisdiction has a concern that needs to have dialogue and mutual cooperation at the county level. And then it doesn't seem that we're quite equal in being residents of the county. And I say this knowing that I have friends and peers that we regularly all work with, that are our board of supervisors today. And I would say significantly, these conditions have nothing to do with our current board of supervisors, even the current staff. These are, and just as it doesn't have anything to do with us as a council and our town staff that allowed this problem to evolve, we should have been harder about it in 91 and said, no, you're not going to hook up until you've come up with your end of the deal. And in good faith, apparently, the town said, we'll hook you up and trust that you're going to come up with your end of the deal later, and that never happened for some mysterious reason. Everybody has a little bit of responsibility with the condition. We've even been told that, well, you let it happen and you should just live with it. You shouldn't try to fix it, you should just live with it. I've also been told that we shouldn't be reaching out to other interested parties and stakeholders, that we should be dialoguing with the county. As you've heard tonight, we've been trying to dialogue with the county for almost three years. We've had some feedback from the county, but most of it has been, they're not interested in having a conversation because of what they see as the implications. We think that we're being held to a standard of representing all possible growth in the county, and that's not at all what we're talking about here. We could not be more surgical, more precise, in the specific possibility of expansion of our sphere of influence and our town limit with this one condition. So I am encouraged and thankful that our existing county staff and supervisors has initiated an interest in dialogue again. We've been silent, silently waiting frankly, for that answer to happen. It doesn't matter why it hasn't or why it has now, but it's encouraging that it's going to move forward in the very near future. I also want to stress the explanation that we received from our town attorney tonight. I think removing the year 2020 is actually making an even more strong positive statement that we are not just talking about 30 years from now, because we know how long general plans take to be amended, 30 years. So 2020 sounded like an eternity back in 1990. Guess what? Here we are, on the verge of it. We've already had to extend the ag preserve because there was a sunset clause. Why wasn't that written in perpetuity in the very beginning? We all talk about the importance of maintaining the agricultural heritage of this valley, because somebody had it in mind, and I can understand that in 30 years, circumstances may be wholesale changed, and you want to have an out. We're saying, we don't even want an out. We want to be fully committed in perpetuity to protecting our agricultural boundaries and the health and integrity of the ag preserve. I believe that we're making a stronger statement by making the language change here. And I'm also willing to commit, I know this is the next item, but to adopt the resolution, again, reinforcing and committing publicly and on paper that we are, we want and are open to legitimate and productive dialogue with our board of supervisors. So I understand people's concerns, especially as Mr. Perez indicated, we spent many hours and months on the Ag Protection Advisory Committee together and have been hashing out issues related to this. And what it reinforces with me is that it explains the fear of the future, but it doesn't explain why our proposed actions tonight are inappropriate based on the conditions we have here in Yountville. And I'll be right back out there, standing probably next to you, Mr. Perez, in the future, talking about how we need to properly control growth and properly protect our agricultural lands, the definitions of ag and ancillary uses, et cetera, et cetera. But in these very narrow conditions that we have presented tonight, I can support what staff has brought forward with a very precise language and a very specific set of circumstances that cannot be replicated anywhere else in this county. We are taking this action, I believe, we'll see in a moment, in the best interest of the residents of Yountville. And I think it also has the potential to be a positive example of how any kind of conditions that we find with municipal services in the cities and the county of Napa going forward, how we can have an honest and healthy dialogue to reach a mutually acceptable solution, regardless of the specific terms and conditions. So, you know, it's kind of long-winded, because I tend to be long-winded. My wife keeps trying to get me to shorten things up, but, you know, especially Councilmember Muller and I and Steve Rogers have been immersed in this, as have Sandra and our town attorney, Marlene Demery has been involved for a long time as well, and Nathan. We've been living this for two-plus years, trying to refine what we are and are not doing, trying to have a healthy dialogue with the county. Sometimes we need to take strong steps to kind of push through obstacles, and I believe that that's what we're doing here tonight. So with that, if there's no further conversation, is there a motion to be had?
I will make the motion for the first resolution number 16-3349, adopting a negative declaration of environmental impact for the town of Yountville's general plan amendment related to the town's boundary, future growth and annexation.
Second.
Now, are there any changes to that resolution that we need to address at this point? I think it's as presented.
As presented.
I mean, I'm asking staff and our town attorney, that we didn't have any changes to anything, correct?
No.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilmember Dornbecker. Was that your second, Councilmember Muller? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? That passes unanimously. Is there action on our second resolution that's proposed?
As of now.
Go ahead, Councilmember Muller.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 16-3350, adopt resolution amending the general plan, open space parks element policy, C dot three dot A dot one dot one regarding the town boundary, amending the land use element policy, C D dot four dot A dot four dot one, and policy, D dot four dot E dot twelve dot one regarding future growth and annexation, and adding map of Yountville planning area and urban limit line.
I have to delete that last section, and urban limit line, the revised one I gave you earlier.
That's right.
Second.
So you're saying that, delete just the phrase "and urban limit line"?
Yes.
And adding map of Yountville planning area, full stop.
Second.
So motion, Councilmember Muller, second, Vice Mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there action on the third resolution?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 16-3350, adopt the resolution amending the general plan of space.
Oh, 3251.
That, scratch that, that's wrong.
Fifty-one.
Excuse me. I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 16-3351, adopting a resolution committing to dialogue with Napa County before taking any action to annex the commercial component of the Domaine Chandon property that is connected to the town's wastewater system.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously also. And I appreciate the fact that our new CEO of the county is here to hear all this dialogue, so that you're not just reading it in the paper or hearing it second or third hand. I think hopefully what you've heard is our honest and complete commitment to having conversations with you and the board of supervisors, and so we look forward to having that in the future. And again, thank you, Mr. Perez, in representing the Farm Bureau's interests tonight. Okay, I think we've taken that business as far as we can take it tonight. Next up, we have an administrative regular item. I'm not going to read that whole paragraph. Who's going to present?
Well, actually, in the interest of time, normally I would introduce and read the town manager's transmittal letter for the budget. I'm going to forego that, since we're trying to get servile you out on the streets to travel to Monterey for a league training event. And I will introduce Maria Ojeda, who will present the last little cleanup on her first budget and acknowledge her and my whole team's efforts to develop and present what, again, is our ninth consecutive balanced budget with continuing investment. So we're very proud of that and with that, Maria.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, council. We've got a balanced budget before you tonight, and this is not new information. We've together worked collectively very hard. On April 5th, we met and discussed the budget parameters, and then on May 16th and 23rd, we met, and we went over budget sections extensively during our public workshops. So the information that you have before you is a compilation of that. I'm going to give you three bullets, and if you want me to elaborate, I will, because I want to be mindful of your time. So we have an annual budget of $16,148,376, which is made up of general fund, capital projects, water, wastewater, special revenue funds, and debt service. Our primary general fund revenues are expected to be at about $9.8 million, of which $8.7 million is expected to be from TOT sales tax and property tax, which are our primary sources of revenue, and the rest, which is $1.1 million, is from the other sources of revenue that the city receives, the town receives. Our reserves, really good news, total $3.8 million, which make up several different accounts, including emergency reserves, revenue stabilization, reserves for insurance, reserves for budget, and reserves for legal contingencies. That is my brief summary of our proposed balanced budget. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to talk with you. I'd rather give you the option and give you these highlights, and then we can go from there. But I'm prepared either way, so.
Well, we've put in a few hours, and you've put in times 10 that, so it's not like we're flying through this. This is really just formalizing it. Any questions of the report? We have no more public, so there's no public input at this point. So is there an action to be had? Vice Mayor, would you like to, your final budget?
Well, before we make a motion, I'd like to at least make a comment.
You're not driving to Monterey.
That's right, I'm going to be brief. I just want to say, you know, how proud I am that you were able to come in in your first year and to execute on a budget and a proposal and bring it together. I mean, I think that what was presented to the council and to the staff was extremely user-friendly. Every year I've been here, it's gotten better, and I would say that this year it was the cleanest that we've seen. I think you did a lot of cleanup items that, you know, should be commended with regards to, you know, accounts that maybe didn't map to the proper location, et cetera. And so with that, you know, we should be proud as a community that we can create a budget of this nature, balance it, and still provide and continue to provide the level of services that we do here. So my hat's off to you, and obviously all of the staff, in the support of developing this, because it really is, you know, it's really incredible to look around and see what we're able to accomplish. So thank you for all your effort on that. And with that, I'd like to make a motion, if there's no other comments, to adopt Resolution Number 16-3352, adopting and approving the 2016-17 operating budget appropriations GAN limit for fiscal year 2016-17, salary ranges and reaffirming existing fiscal policies, general finance policy, town investment policy. How much did you write in here?
That's why I didn't read the paragraph.
Use of long-term debt policy, OPEB trust investment policy, fund balance policy, utility enterprise rate policy, use of drought water reserve policy.
Thank you.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I would just echo on behalf of the whole council, the Vice Mayor's comments. Excellent job, coming in year one especially. I know we don't make wholesale changes, but still, as you said, capturing some things that tighten it up, what do we call it?
Tighten it up.
Yeah. We had three or four different terms, I think, for it, but this council has been very proactive in funding reserves and funding infrastructure, and we will continue to do so, I'm sure, going forward. So kudos to you, kudos to us for the way we have prioritized a strong budget. All right, moving forward, that's probably the fastest we'll approve a budget.
Well, Joe might win. He might even be faster.
No PowerPoints from Joe on the budget.
Hundred and fifty-five pages.
The challenge is on.
We're cutting your AV budget, by the way, for next year.
As he brings in the emergency thing out on the street to do his presentation, yes.
Okay, we're moving. What's that? Oh, yeah, that fast?
Next item.
Five-year capital improvement program, as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have before you the CIP budget, you've seen it a couple of times. It was before Parks and Rec Advisory Committee earlier in the year, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
And I know I kid and we kid you, you've done very thorough and similar to what the Vice Mayor said, making it clear for us, for the public, thorough and representing our strategic goals and our priorities, and it's very much appreciated. So I don't want to make light of all the effort and hard work that you and your team have put in.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
So there are no questions? Yes, there's no member of the public here, it's not technically a public hearing, but if there was a public here, they'd be welcome to comment on it. I'll invite a motion on this item?
One comment, please. And in looking at this, what I think everyone needs to recognize, there's people watching on TV, that the town has continued to make and commit the resources necessary to support its infrastructure. Good job. This is something that, you know, we'll be able to carry forward for decades with the investments we've made.
Well, and since you started it, I'll use the Hopper Creek flood mitigation as an example, as you talked about, the third highest budget item that we've ever dealt with in the town of Yountville. And no, we don't have significant flooding today, but we've just addressed an issue that could be a problem for the next 50, 60 years. And that's the kind of productivity that I'm talking about, that we are prioritizing. We have the resources now to make these kind of infrastructure decisions, and it speaks to how we have renovated our parks, same idea. We've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars as a priority because we can now and we need to, it's been decades. And so we're not going to just continue to put it off to the future, we're dealing with it now. So thank you very much. Yes, Councilmember Dornbecker?
My comment is that I'm very happy that we are proactive about our infrastructure in the town, and I applaud the Public Works Department, and just like the earthquake retrofit of this building, you'll never know.
That's true. Councilmember Muller?
I also just really want to thank everything that, you know, the staff, especially being led by Joe, does for our capital improvement projects. And I've said it before, these are the, there's nothing sexy about new sewer systems and new gas lines and slurry seal and all that. And, you know, we get a lot of grief from our residents that we're not giving them something. But this is the most important thing. Not that everyone else's job isn't important, don't take it that way at all, that we really, as a council and staff, really do for this town. So I think our, I think this has been, once again, a great year, and you'll always have certainly my support with these things that go below ground, that nobody sees, that keeps everything above ground ticking.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I would just say that this is a true team effort from all of us in town, all the staff, and it's projects, large and small, and it comes from a variety of sources, both residents and staff, and we try to incorporate all of those ideas and bring... all of those ideas and bring what we truly need forward every year, and then develop a list that is five years deep for the upcoming year. So I do appreciate all the help we get, especially the support from town council. It's been a very challenging year, but we're on to next year and ready to go at it.
One other thing that I wanted to just quickly address is the response time that you and your team have is impressive, to say the least. I would challenge any other city or town to find a public works department that is more responsive to issues as they pop up, sometimes literally pop up or fall down. And so, you know, that just shows a dedication that, I mean, it's shared throughout the entire staff, but since we're talking about your budget right now, dedication, some local residents, some not local residents, that take pride in this community, and so it shows in your efforts every day. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Couldn't agree more.
We have a little bit of an awkward segue now. Are you talking about the next item?
No, I'm going to adopt a resolution before we...
Oh, yes, before...
With that, I'll make a, I'll make a...
Motion?
Motion.
There you go.
I don't have to do this again.
Seamless for the last...
To adopt resolution number 163353, approving the town's five-year capital improvement program for fiscal years 2016-17 to 2020-21, and finding it consistent with the general plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. So now the awkward transition to our next item, to call a special election to fill a vacancy on the council. And it's awkward in the sense of...
Who's doing it?
No, we're just in a position that tonight, we won't be able to fully, you know, show our appreciation. But before I get ahead of ourselves, Vice Mayor?
Okay. So, first of all, thank you, everyone here. I'm going to forget people, so it's, if I forgot you, it's okay. I apologize in advance. Just one second.
Take all the time you need.
I want to thank all the past and present Yountville council staff and town council members, Heathernap County elected officials and employees. So much of the work you do goes unnoticed, and it is meaningful. Thank you for all your service. I'm usually much better. I didn't practice. I want to thank the Yountville community, the residents, businesses, people, who make this place incredible, for everyone who comes here and gets to enjoy it. There's lots of people who live, who visit. This place is incredible because of all of you. I want to thank my family for their support of all my service and effort. My friends and colleagues who've encouraged me and supported me, challenged me to be a better leader, and who inspired me to take on this experience. This video's been cut, right? These last six years, almost six, we've accomplished so much to be proud of, including all the investment in our town, its infrastructure, the roads, town hall, the parks, the programs, investing in the people, staff and otherwise, supporting the public safety in this community, ensuring the sustainability of our water and wastewater enterprise funds. We saved a school, a tree. We supported neighborhood discourse on really complex issues, including church. We supported the arts. We celebrated our 50th anniversary. The list goes on and on, and it's all been within budget. The challenges Yountville will certainly have are going to change, they're going to evolve. We've experienced one tonight. The council must remain diligent. I know you will. You need to continue to listen. I know you will. I'm confident the residents will be heard. I tried to figure out what I could say as a mantra about me and my work. Whether you believe it or not, I tried to do the most good possible with the responsibility you entrusted me with while muting my bias and attending to the community's welfare. I trust I performed as well as you would have expected. And I had to finish with something that would be memorable, besides blabbering, since there's so much public. It's a haiku for Yountville. "Fleeting Time, Enjoy. Community Bonded In. Heart of the Vowing." As my daughter would say, I should drop the mic. Thank you, good night, and good luck. Oh, you're closest. At least I get to acknowledge public comment this time, right? Because there's an item I want to speak on. Thank you for indulging me.
Where are you going?
And I formally resigning from the...
There you go.
We already got the letter.
Do I need to say it?
And now you dropped the mic.
Now, thank you. I'll stay as a member of the public, because I still resign.
We're going to need your badge.
Well said, as an attorney would. Don't forget the key.
So just in case, just in case people haven't been informed, Vice Mayor Hall is relocating outside the town limits of the town of Yountville. There's no way possible for us to modify our sphere of influence to include El Centro Avenue, but he's had an amazing opportunity to, you know, better his living situation for his family, which is absolutely first and foremost, and we're all going to miss you personally, his friends, his colleague, all that you've done for our community. You can continue to deliver for the community, and I'm sure you will, and will more formally and thoroughly and officially and hopefully more lightheartedly recognize you at our July 19 meeting. So you're obligated to come back for that.
And you'll always be an honorary citizen of the town of Yountville.
Yes. So just for all of us, thank you for your many years of service on the town council specifically and as vice mayor. You've served and represented Yountville in a very professional way, honorable way. You should be very satisfied with all the work that you've done, and we're going to miss you up here.
We're going to have a lot more cookies left, guys.
Maria's job just got a lot harder, because the four of us are left up here to navigate the finances without your input.
You have a question to work with.
My favorite theme counter, that's you.
So we have an issue now with a special election. So Town Attorney, tell us what our options are.
Well, your issue is really with the vacancy, and the special election is one of the ways you can address it. So one of the reasons that you're dealing with the vacancy now is because it affords the council the opportunity, which wasn't present the last time we talked about vacancies, to call a special election at the same time as a general municipal election. So if you'll recall from the last time we talked about this with a vacancy, your only option was either appointment or to pay for an entire election just to fill that one vacancy, and the council opted in that instance to appoint someone to fill the empty chair. You have the same, and that someone is right, and you have the same choice before you now. The difference is, you have the opportunity to consolidate that special election with the general election. And so it represents a minimal cost increase, if any. I'm not, I think you might have to pay a tiny bit, but it's far less than you would if you had to call one purely for this instance. So the timing, in some sense, is based on that, to give you that opportunity. That's a long way of saying you have two options. You can appoint someone to fill the seat like you did last time, or you can call a special election as the resolution and recommendation before you indicate.
And we are required to call for that special election no later than July 17?
Right. Yes.
Which is two days prior to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is why we're discussing it right now.
That's correct. We could have done this on the meeting on the 5th, if there were a meeting on the 5th, but for various reasons, there isn't. So this is the last opportunity you have to call the special election, unless you were to call a special meeting just for this purpose. But it seemed to us prudent to bring it forth at a regular meeting.
And I want to acknowledge that selflessly, former Vice Mayor Hall timed this to our advantage and has, you know, again, sacrificed personal interest with the community's interest in mind to allow this to happen.
That's correct. Technically, the vacancy would have affected the moment he changed residence. So when he no longer was a resident of the town is when the vacancy would have been created by operation of law. However, he took the initiative to make sure that the vacancy took effect while you had time to have all the options available to you.
Right. So any questions about our options? Basically, did it call a special election to coincide with the general election November 8th or to appoint? Any questions about that as presented?
I just want to make a comment that we've already called for the general election. So this is in...
This is a special election that will be consolidated with the general election.
And I was trying to open up the resolution, but it doesn't open, so...
So it's just in a nutshell, and we confirmed with the county elections office to make sure that we had everything in a row.
Sorry, hold on just a second.
No, no problem.
The resolution number is what?
3354.
We got three people saying numbers here. Julie?
It's 16-3354.
Thank you.
So this does nothing to change your prior resolution. That resolution calls your general election and consolidates it. This one calls a special election and consolidates it as well. And one of the reasons for doing these separately is so that when the notice goes out for applicants or candidates, rather, they can be a candidate for the four-year terms or for the two-year term. And that reminds me, I didn't quite explain this. The person who is elected or appointed to fill former Vice Mayor Hall's seat will serve out the remainder of his term. So now there's, there are three options for people who want to serve on the council. There are two four-year terms, and then there is this one two-year term. So people who are mildly afraid of commitment, this might be a good opportunity to dip their toe in the water, as it were. But it's a completely separate office, and you'd have to separately file candidacy for it.
And it'll be designated as such, so that...
That's right.
There's no confusion that the third-place vote-getter is the half-term.
That's right.
So you actually take out papers for a four-year term or a two-year term? And file papers, okay.
And there'll be separate notice. So from the county's perspective, and frankly, from mine as well, this was a much clearer way to do it, so everybody's real clear on what it is they're applying for.
We're really looking forward to having our town clerk back, I bet, aren't we?
Uh-huh.
Any other questions about the staff report?
I'd like to make a question.
Not yet. We have a member of the public that would like to speak, I believe. So if there's any public comment, now would be the time to step forward and properly identify yourself and raise the microphone and...
Thank you.
All that.
I'll try not to cry this time. Again, thank you, council, mayor and council, Richard Hall, 1881 Mulberry Street. I am, I have sold my home, as you know, as been presented. That occurred on June 7th. I have rented it back in accordance with town policy and staying within what's allowable for 60 days while I remodel the home I'm moving into, which is out of our jurisdiction. To that end, when I knew that was going to occur, I took it upon myself to engage the town attorney in that dialogue, to find out what would be the most pragmatic option. You acknowledged it, and I appreciate that. I didn't want to leave the you, as the council, in any more of a lurch than was going to be necessitated by the fact that I was moving. And so I wanted to give you every viable option to your disposal. And again, I'm unbiased in what your decision is going to be. You could choose to appoint or whatever. I frankly, obviously, don't have a position on that, but I wanted to make sure that you knew that this was done deliberately, because I could have technically served through the end of July, at least for one more meeting. But, you know, I just made sure that we were clear and could give you guys as much time and leeway to do what you needed to do. So I will still be in the town of Yountville. Maybe unfortunately for you, you probably hear a bunch of complaints now from my house about all the things that need to be fixed in town. That's a joke, but I wanted to know...
We have the MyVille app for that.
Yeah, I downloaded it. But I did want to let you know that this was done deliberately and with a lot of foresight and thought, because you guys have plenty on your plates, and I didn't want to make it any more work than it needed to be. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're a lot shorter on that die than up here.
More, more too.
With that public comment, any further discussion by the council? Councilmember Dornbecker?
I would like to make a motion that we approve resolution number 3354.
16...
16-3354. A resolution of the town council of the town of Yountville, calling and giving notice of a special election to fill a vacancy on the town council and requesting consolidation.
Second.
There, with the statewide general election to be held on November 8, 2016.
And there is a second. I'm not going to ask for any further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Let's see, next up, staff informational reports. I know we do have one from our previous interviews for the Arts Commission.
Yes, earlier this afternoon, we held Yountville Arts Commission interviews, and there are four open seats for that commission. The council conducted interviews and made their determination.
Before you, I'm sorry, before you read that, if you could acknowledge all of the applicants and so we can thank them formally? Do you still have that list?
Absolutely, I do. So we had applicant Kay Le Franconi, sorry, I hope I didn't misspell that, Maria Myers, Jim McDonald, Chris Di Natale, Dee Heiser, and Kim Cook. So they all conducted, held their interviews with the council this afternoon, and the council came to the determination of the, there were three three-year terms and one two-year term. So Kim Cook, Chris Di Natale, and Dee Heiser were all appointed to the three-year terms, and that was unanimous. Jim McDonald was appointed to the two-year term, and that was unanimous.
Thank you very much. Before I ask for a motion to adopt those results, I want to acknowledge, we had some very strong candidates for this, which was very encouraging. Kim Cook is the only incumbent that we are about to reappoint, but I want to acknowledge all of the residents that stepped forward and have committed to helping move our Yountville Arts efforts forward. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to accept the votes as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Those are unanimously accepted. Thank you all very much for that. Council meeting reports, the flood control accepted their annual budget today. Is there any brief Napa Valley Transportation Authority meeting?
It's, we had a budget hearing, and it'll come back for finalization by the board at the next meeting.
And I missed my last meeting as chair, but that's okay. I was in Europe, I don't mind.
Oh, and there was a, have you heard, there was a small change. Instead of Mayor Tekel being vice chair, she asked Mary LaRose if she would do that for the City of Napa.
Okay. Did not hear that. So the City of Napa still rotates the same, it's just a different board member, okay?
Correct.
Anything from Upper Valley Waste Management?
Monday, the 27th, is our next meeting.
Okay. Any other board, or board, council reports or announcements?
Fourth of July. No? Yeah.
Yeah. It is coming up, 4th of July, yes.
Fourth of July. There'll be big events going up at the Veterans Home, starting at noon. Thank you, Samantha.
The pool will be open that day.
And the pool will be open.
Though it's a Monday, the pool will be open.
Though it's a Monday, the pool will be open.
Right, great.
I also just want to recognize the fact that we did just rededicate Yountville Community Park in ninety-five degree weather. It looks fantastic. Again, our Public Works, our Park and Recs Department, our entire staff, and our Park and Recs Commission, they were instrumental also in, in the redesign and the rebuild, and we're looking forward to an amazing summer season out there with all the activities that we can have more comfortably there. With that, we do have a brief closed session. We are not anticipating any reportable action, I believe. So, with that, we are going to adjourn the closed session. We will come out of that to adjourn to our next regular council meeting, which has been set for Tuesday, July nineteenth at six P.M. So, we'll go into closed session. Once again, Vice Mayor Hall, thank you for all of your community service and your time on the council. We look forward to you staying engaged.
No, I'll be out here until ten P.M.
That's the only reason why, is because you're not up here.